This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home Use Tribune, The Star-Later, and Highland Park Planet on January 8, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hboro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained posted, continuously posted as required by law by et cetera to my right and left of council chambers. Chief, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Council President Kjell Cho-han. Councilmember Prustonik.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Here.
This is District Administrator Callahan.
Here.
Okay, council report. I'm going to start off with Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. Best wishes during the holidays for all of our residents and to everybody who has to pay their taxes. Today's Judea Day, April 15th. With regard to the Police Department, we will shortly be adding another officer to fill a vacancy. Officer Tyler Morris will be joining the force at the end of the month. We were very impressed with his interview and he will definitely be an asset to the department and town. But the Police Department is again holding its Make a Kite with a Cop event on April 30th at the Community Center. We'll have more on that on our social media and website pages. Last year was a great event, filled up rapidly. I enjoyed it a lot. There were lots of laughter and fun. It was a merry mess and I hope you find time to take the children or make a kite yourself. Two programs have been launched with the County Prosecutor's Office. One is the Vision Zero Program, which will be using departments across the county to enforce traffic laws along countywide roadways. Highland Park will be included in this. We will share details after the program on what you know of its success. The other program is the Blue Envelope Program, which invites drivers who may be on the autism spectrum to maintain their vehicle credentials in a special blue envelope designed for the program. This allows a driver to self-identify with officers in a traffic situation in a private way that the driver may have personality behaviors which have, in the past, caused significant incidents between officers and drivers. Our officers are receiving specific training in how to deal with drivers who react in certain circumstances which could appear antagonistic or worse than untrade on. With regard to the Fire Department, we've added two paid part-time firefighters to the roles of our Fire Department, which will significantly increase coverage in the department. Chief Shami is able to schedule more coverage for our Fire Department and also cut down on overtime for shifts as well. I spoke with him this afternoon and he said they came aboard this weekend already. We are being able to make up a lot of shift problems that we've had. The department is continuing its training sessions each month for both paid and volunteer firefighters and subjects like turnout gear maintenance and other vital information that keeps us up to date. The next training will be truck and hose operations, bringing our firefighter's hands-on training and maintenance of hose and other equipment in actual rolling training with trucks. With regard to the library, the Board of Trustees has been reworking policy and procedures and its code of conduct for patrons and employees. The library is partnering with the Highland Park Human Relations Commission for a book discussion program in its very early stages, which hopefully we'll hear more about. But the book is The Heaven and Earth Bookstore, excellent and thought-provoking work on race relations, human relations, and the network of us which forms our community. The next Board of Trustees meeting is this coming Monday, April 21st, in the meeting room at the media room at the library. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Prustonik.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I may have my shortest report ever tonight. So my name is Jason Waselmick. I'm the Chair of the Health and Public Services Committee. The Board of Health met last Thursday and they wanted to remind everyone and to really stress the importance of getting your MMR vaccines to protect against measles and to really ensure that you get all recommended vaccines. So they strongly encourage everyone who have not already, roll up your sleeves and get yourself vaccinated with all recommended vaccines. As I indicated in prior reports, and they also emphasize you can now forget measles. So again, strongly encourage you to discuss with your health provider and make sure that you get all of your recommended vaccines. And that, Mayor, was all I had for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Vargas.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Lomaniis Vargas and I serve as a Council Youth Administration of Recreation Department. This past week, as part of Local Government Week, I had the pleasure of meeting with residents at the Sea Restaurant on Rorden Avenue. To meet up with especially meaningful, as it was conducted entirely in Spanish, allowing for deeper connection with our Spanish-speaking community, I was able to share information with a new Highland Park resident about various oral services and how to navigate our town, how to access and translate the oral website, which was a very good resource for her. Our conversation touched on many topics, including the school district, community engagement, and small business resources. It was a very productive and enriching experience with valuable ideas exchanged, and I hope that it repeats itself next year. I really, really enjoyed it. So I want to thank the mayor for suggesting his idea to the council and making it happen. Community announcements. There will be a proud intervention info session by the Department of Aging on Tuesday, April 22nd, at 10:45 at the Community Center. A presentation will be led by the Highland Park Police Department, InfraGuard New Jersey, and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, and will focus on how to protect yourself from fraud and scams. That same day later on will be the spring luncheon at 12:00 p.m. with musical entertainment provided by Golden James. Please join the Community Center and the community there. For more information, please call 732-819-0052. There will also be a 90-plus birthday celebration and luncheon thrown by the Middlesex County. And that will take place on Thursday, May 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So if you know anybody that's in that age bracket, please invite them. That will take place at the Edison Senior Center. Did I mention that already? You can call 732-745-3295. That's 732-745-3295 to register or organize an event. Youth Recreation Programs. They begin next week. So if you haven't registered yet, please do so. You can go to highlandparkreg.com to register for these youth programs such as soccer, baseball, youth tennis, basketball, girls wrestling, and dance. If you get, you can call 732-819-00 for assistance on having registered. And I'll just keep reminding at every single meeting that we have, leading out to these events, the Memorial Day Parade will take place on Sunday, May 26th at 11:00 a.m. There's fireworks to the park. There's Day of July 3rd with festivities and vendors beginning at 6:00 p.m. down at Nelson Park. And of course, Parks Act is coming up, and that first one will be on Wednesday, July 17th. For any of these events and details, please go to the Borough website, follow our social media pages, or check out the New Jersey Highland Park Recreation on Facebook and Instagram. The Arts Commission has exciting learn and create series coming up, and that will be starting with one of them called Unleash Your Inner Poet and Transformative Poetry Workshop for Non-Poets. That will take place Sunday, April 28th at 7:30 at the Highland Park Community Center. Registration is required. Please go on our social media or the Borough website for more information on how to register. There will also be coming with two more workshops, one called Simple and Stylish: Beginner Jewelry Making on Tuesday, May 27th at 7:00 p.m. That will take place at the library. And the third one is Embracing Imperfection: The Art of Webi-Sabi on Sunday, June 29th at 2:00 p.m. at the Highland Park Library. We want to thank Highland Park Library for being accommodating and letting us get all of these events there, as well as the Community Center, who's always a part of the community to these events. The Historical Commission meeting will take place this Thursday in person at Borough Park, and on the agenda will be a review of the Borough's historical archives. I'm very excited about that. I would yet to see that. They will also be providing us with an update on the rent application, which they just submitted to the New Jersey Council for Humanities. I'm hopeful that the commission will qualify and receive this important support as part of their community's history project that they're hoping to lay out later this year. And that's all I have. Stay tuned for more details. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also participated in the Local Government Week. I thought it was fantastic. I had a really good time. I spent some time sitting in Giddy's Pizzeria. I had people come up and discuss the importance of redevelopment, which certainly are a part of all of our redevelopment plans. I had people want to talk about ranked choice voting, how it's pick up our schools, and had a bit of a difference of opinion. We had a couple people came up and say, "Please get rid of the deer," and somebody else said, "Please don't do anything with the deer." So that was always good. But my favorite was when I had a husband come up and tell me that Donald Trump was the greatest person ever, followed by his wife, him to stop being annoying, and then we had to stand up to him. So the diversity of opinion, I think, is a wonderful thing at Highland Park. We see it all over the place. But I certainly got to see it firsthand at Giddy's. And it was great. I hope we get to do it again. Thank you, Mayor, for making that happen. In terms of other things, remember that the 5K Race and the Spring Street Fair is coming on Sunday, May 4th. At 9:00 a.m., there is a 5K Race, which all the proceeds go to PTO organizations and Highland Park schools. If you want to run, if you want to sponsor, if you want to be a part of it, please take a look at the Main Street website. After the 5K is, of course, our Street Fair. It goes from 11:30 to 4:30. It's one of the highlight events of the year. We are still looking for anybody who is interested in being a vendor, but also anybody who is interested in sponsorship opportunities. If you go to the Main Street website and mainstreethp.org/sponsorshipopportunities, there's a bunch of different opportunities for that. And as always, the farmers market is up and running on Friday afternoon, so please come out and enjoy. And lastly, I just wanted to wish everyone who is celebrating Passover to have a happy Passover, and those who will celebrate this weekend also a happy Easter. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. And just wanted to wish everyone a happy Fair Housing Month. April is Fair Housing Month, just something to remember. Congress passed the Fair Housing Act on April 11th, 1968, making it illegal to deny housing to people based on their race, skin color, religion, or country of origin. It is essentially prohibited discrimination in the housing market and provided marginalized groups with equal opportunity to rent or purchase homes. Upon signing the act into law, one week after the assassination of Dr. Muddley through King Chute, President Lyndon Johnson proclaimed that long last fair housing for all is now part of the American way of life. Housing discrimination based on gender was added to the Fair Housing Act in 1974, and discrimination against those with disabilities or with children under the age of 18 was included in 1988. Now, we all know that, you know, President Johnson and the Fair Housing Act was a profound and landmark piece of legislation passed, again, just after the assassination of Dr. Muddley through King. And to proclaim that long last fair housing for all is now part of the American way of life is idealistic and important, but obviously not true. So we do have, we still, 50 years later, almost approaching 60 years later, we are, still have a lot of work to do. And I know this council certainly, this Mayor and council certainly support fair housing to address discrimination anyway in the housing space. So that's that. And as Public Works and Public Utilities Chair, I just wanted to announce the garbage collection schedule for this week, April 14th through April 18th. Borough offices are closed this Friday, April 18th, and observance of Good Friday. And the garbage collection schedule is as follows, and I will start with tomorrow since we are halfway through that program. Wednesday, April 16th, garbage collection is in Business District and South Side. Thursday, April 17th, there will be South Side Recycling Collection. And Friday, April 18th, there is no garbage, no recycling. So please prepare accordingly and please be mindful of the change in schedule. We encourage all of our Highland Park residents to download the free Recycle Coach app to keep up to date with recycling and garbage updates. Just to report out on trash collection for the month of March, we collected 348 and a half tons of trash collected over nine collection days, delivered to Middlesex County landfill. Year-to-date, we've collected more than 913 tons. The tipping fee, otherwise known as the solid waste disposal fee that Highland Park pays for the month of March was $25,718.50 and year-to-date, $67,316.61. Just a little bit on the tipping fee. This is charged to municipality and private haulers for each ton of solid waste delivered to the Middlesex County landfill. The Middlesex County Board of Commissioners and Authorities Commissioners have restricted the use of Middlesex County landfill, the solid waste produced within the county, in order to extend the landfill's lifespan and prevent excess truck traffic through the county's transportation network. With recycling, to date, we, I'm sorry, in the month of March, we had nearly 75 tons of recycling collected over eight recycling days, delivered to Colgate Paperstock in Jersey Addy near Brunswick. Year-to-date, collection is 233.3 tons. An update on our recycling processor. I thought, no, I've spoken about the Colgate Recycling Company quite a bit up here, and Environmental Commission, when I spent time with them. Colgate has been purchased by Republic Services, and we have been told that they will provide the same safe level of service that had been previously provided by Colgate. So you should see no difference in the way recycling is collected, but just wanted to add that note. Bulk pickup. It's the season. Yay, bulk pickup. It's April, so that means bulk, you can make your appointment to have your bulk trash picked up. Curbside, bulk waste collection will be by appointment. Pickups are scheduled on Wednesdays during April, May, June, September, and October. To make an appointment, which you need to do, please call Public Works at 732-247-9379. Each household may request up to two collections per year. Just another note, that week after the townwide garage sale, Tuesday, September 17th, and Thursday, September 19th, there will be bulk pickups where no appointment is necessary. So in September, you will not have to make an appointment. But recycling will not be collected during the time, so just please keep that in mind. We'll report back more closely to that time as well. Materials may be left, may be placed at the curbside no sooner than one hour before sundown or the day prior to scheduled pickup. Materials not properly secured, bundled, and unacceptable items are listed on www.hboro.com. Materials put out for collection without a scheduled appointment or on the wrong date will not be collected. So please contact Public Works during office hours, 6:30 to 3:00 p.m. Let them know that you want a pickup at your address and schedule it. Sustainable Highland Park is another area that falls under the Public Works Public Utilities portfolio. Sustainable Highland Park is planning its Earth Day Fair on Sunday, May 4th, from 11:00 to 3:30. That's the only one with Councilman Hale signing on the street fair. The Earth Day Fair is part of that. It's embedded in that on North Third Avenue from Raritan to Denison. We're going to have 25 interactive booths and environmental education booth, free native plant giveaways, a rain barrel build, a Rutgers solar car on display, a green threads fashion show, more on that, as well as live musical performances between 11:00 and 30. Regarding the fashion show, showcase your sustainable designs, upcycle, innovate. The submission deadline is April 26th, but you probably need to know more information about this. You can reach out for more information at www.sustainablehighlandpark.org. And just real kudos to the members of Sustainable Highland Park, who have really been working overtime to plan a lot of exciting initiatives, as well as meeting the requirements of being Highland Park's Green Team, where we get points from sustainable jersey for our environmental initiatives, opening us up to more grants, and obviously the state-owned recognition. Thank you to Highland Park resident Josephine Chimo, who led a workshop, Turning Your Lawn Into a Food Garden, last Sunday. There, we learned how to transform your lawn into a thriving food garden using permaculture and square foot gardening. This is just a sample of some of the many programs that we're going to see from either Sustainable, the Environmental Commission, or the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. So please keep a lookout for more interactive presentations on maintaining landscaping care on your property, information on invasive plantings, and tips on native plantings, and so much more. Sustainable Highland Park will have its next general meeting on Zoom next Wednesday, April 23rd, at 7:30 p.m. You can find the listing and the link at www.hboro.com. Just a quick note, you've probably seen our tree contractor out and about planting 100, planting trees as part of our tree planting contract, which is really exciting. So some of those empty spots along the verge, thank you Jacob Callahan for your keen stewardship over this program as well. You know, we do have a lot of, you know, so these are planting street trees around the borough, and the borough really prides itself on being a green community. And in order to do that, we need to have a methodical, long-term, and annual approach to tree planting schedule. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee provides immense input, oversight, and feedback regarding our tree planting schedule. They also work closely with our vendors and our watering contractors, and it really is a well-oiled operation. And again, thank you to Jacob Callahan, Terry Probarre, for being the administrative brains behind these programs. So if you do, if you have a stretch of street where you do not have a tree, please request one. We do these twice a year, and 100 are going in now. And we'll have more in future cycles. So please keep your eyes open to that and you have to request a tree. I did just want to just chime in on the town hall meetings. Thank you, Mayor Harry Glazer, everyone who helped set those up. I was at a Kihei at the corner of South Third and Raritan, and it was a lot of fun. We had some really good conversations. Some of the areas that I touched on were traffic enforcement, deer management came up. Once again, not necessarily concerns, but questions about South Third and the Republic Plaza and our schools. It was great feedback, and I think as council members, a lot of that stuff that we don't always hear, because, you know, we're so, we're working on our own, you know, specific areas. So it's really good to get kind of that broad feedback, and then we can report back to our colleagues on what we heard in their buckets. So thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim Cho-han.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephanie Kim Cho-han, and I chair Finance. I also want to start my report by reporting on the Local Government Week. Also, thank you, Mayor, for helping organize this. I was actually at the Me Too in Flower Shop on last week. And while I was in the middle of the day, I did receive some feedback. Actually, the first was a compliment on, as I quote, whoever did the Felton Hot Lot, please thank them for me. So, and they would like to see more of that, the resident. And also, one of the business owners on the question, how do I become culture, right? What's the steps? Who do I reach out to? Which I reached out to Councilman Hale and made works with some resources that he has, just so, you know, residents, as you know. So, thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to the next one. And Rate Control will be meeting on April 24th at 5:30 here in council chambers. Also, April is still Financial Literacy Month. Last council meeting, I also reminded everyone it was Financial Literacy Month and challenged you to look over your subscriptions. A recent event with the stock market, now is the time to kind of shuffle around maybe your 401Ks or retirements, if you're still daring to look in, to even log into the account. So, you know, now is the time to refresh and maybe look over that with financial advisory of anger. Also, today is Tax Day, as well, like Councilman George had mentioned, the most stressful day, I think, of the year. And just wanted to mention that participating locations, Planet Fitness, because it's the most stressful day of the year, is offering free hydro massages. You don't need a membership. Anyone can go in and, you know, it's pretty, don't need a membership. It's only until the end of this week, only until the 90th, but just check in, make sure the location you're going to is participating, which I thought was really cool. And also wishing our community a happy Passover and a happy Easter. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant Borough Administrator Callahan.
I don't have much to report today. I just want to reemphasize something Councilmember Hirsch said about the tree plantings. They are going around town over the next few days. If you have any issues or questions about your tree or the planting, please don't be afraid to reach out to me, and I'll see what I can do to help.
Thank you. Borough Attorney's Report.
And my report is very brief. I'm glad that everyone participated in Government Week. Last week, it was a lot of fun for, I can tell by each and every one of us that's up here, that we really had an opportunity not only to support local businesses in town, but to meet and greet people who come in and have a cup of coffee or support in a very direct way. They came out, they bought coffee, they bought cakes, they bought food at these various different establishments, and that was one more sale or a few more sales for that day that that business made. So we had Government Week to meet each and every resident, but we also supported local business. And our focus at all time is to make sure that our local businesses are being supported. So kudos to all of us who made it happen. Thank you all. Last but not least, I want to say happy Passover, happy Easter, be safe to everyone. And as we go through this time of year, let's be reflective and be kind and gentle to each other. Last but not least, I would like to take a moment of silence for a longtime Highland Park resident, Herb Gross. He passed away earlier this year. And Mr. Gross was always the constant fixture right in the back of the room. So may we have a moment of silence. Okay. And now it's time for public participation. Total of 21 minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attended by Zoom. Please state your name and address.
Mary Botino, 709 Madison Avenue. And I'm here to ask you to kindly vote no on Resolutions 118 and 119. And in particular, 119, this is the pot shop that our recent mayor, Gail Mittler, and her friends and family are directly involved in. And the entire process was done without any disclosure on behalf of Gail Mittler or her friends or her son, that they were actually involved in an application for a pot shop while the town was considering this entire process. Many of us feel that that really is a lack of integrity, unethical, really an example of where personal interests have stepped in as opposed to the greater good of the community. And a couple of weeks back, several of you took the step of not voting to give this particular outfit an extension. And that was a good step forward. And we hope that tonight, enough of you will take this step as well to not endorse a permit for this particular location to open. There, I think many of us would agree, we're seeing a lot of issues in various levels of government where things are happening for the personal interest of elected officials, and it's very hard to stand up against it. But here in Highland Park, we hope that you will be brave and stand up against this particular location. We know that you're friendly with Gail Mittler. She was mayor here a long time. You're probably friends with her son, perhaps her employee. perhaps her employees also involve Arnie Weinberg, but again, it's really important to separate these cordial friendships with the way that this particular location came about. And we hope that enough of you will recognize that it's important to stand up, and you can still run into Gail or her son Stephen or Arnie Weinberg in other circumstances and say, look, sorry, I just couldn't go forward with it, um, but that's how I felt about it. Uh, a lot of people are looking to see what kind of integrity the council will have in this issue. Uh, I'm going to also give you each a copy of this, uh, chart showing all the connections, and on the back of it, um, you'll also notice regarding, uh, Resolution one nineteen, um, the locate, the second location in question. Uh, this, this location, the second pot shop at tonight, is right next door to a bubble tea spot. This is a picture of families, kids going in and out, um, and the, may I just finish it like that? And, uh, in addition, the advertising that the bubble shop uses, which actually has a picture of her high school on it. So again, this is a magnet for our kids right next door to this pot shop. Thank you so much. And may I hand out?
Uh, you just, uh, get them to Jake.
Okay.
And we'll get him later.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you so much.
Hi, Melissa Ladue, uh, thirteen Lewis Street, Highland Park, of course. Um, I would wish that you would vote no on one eighteen and one nineteen. Um, Colleen Tyler has been at these meetings, and she wrote down for some things for me to say, but she's out of the country. Um, these businesses present continuing threats to the youth of our community and put Highland Park in a negative light, which can affect the future home values. These are not family-friendly businesses. I live three blocks away from Blackburn, and, um, Carcy Park is one block away. And I do have some gentlemen that were hanging out at the picnic tables and smoking already before we had Anja. And, um, the garbage from Blackburn is already flying into the yard across the street, um, because they don't cover their, their big garbage cans that fly across the street into, uh, that vacant business forest on Mooker Jav. So I've been picking up the garbage, and, um, I've also been taking pictures of the little packages from Anja. They, they take their gummies or whatever, and they throw the packages on the side of my house. But I went to speak to them, and they stopped that. I said I could bring some more garbage cans, and they stopped that. But, um, it really is a detriment to that part of the community, because it's more residential there than it is on the main street. And, um, it will drag the value of my house down. And the little kids are right there, and those little ha, those houses right behind have little kids, they're rentals with little kids. So I, okay, thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
Um, I'm not seeing anyone, then.
Right. See, there's no one. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas? Ordnance requiring a second reading. Personally, please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh six.
An ordinance authorizing lease of a building located at twenty dash forty River Road to the Reyes Cultural Center has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit to publication are on file.
Yeah, now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, and or if you're on Zoom, you can raise your, raise your hand button. Anyone on Zoom, Jake?
No, no one's answering this.
Right, see, no one. May I have a motion to close public participation on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh six? So move. Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh six?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
So please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh seven.
An ordinance authorizing lease of a building located at one oh one Raritan Ave. Avenue to the Lower Raritan Watership Partnership has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit to publication are on file.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone and do so if you're on Zoom, raise your hands. Anyone on Zoom?
No one's answering this.
Okay, see, there's no one. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh seven?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh seven?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember George?
Uh, just want to comment that, uh, I abstained on twenty-five dash twenty-one oh seven on General Counsel to a Lower Raritan Watership Partnership, but it's the only wooden boat shop in Highland Park.
No, it is.
Is that a yes?
I abstained.
Thanks. Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Clear, please report on ordinance number, ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh eight.
An ordinance authorizing lease of the first floor of a building located at two twelve Raritan Avenue to Main Street Highland Park to the maintain office space has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit to publication are on file.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone and announce yourself. If there is anyone on Zoom, please raise hand. And there's no one on Zoom. And there's no one, okay. See, no, see, no. Further, may I have a motion to close public participation on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh eight?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
I'll stand.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh eight?
So move.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Stand.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Clear, please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh nine.
An ordinance authorizing lease of a second floor, the second floor of a building located at two twelve Raritan Avenue to the Reforint Church of Highland Park Affordable Housing Corporation to maintain an emergency shelter for residents has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit to publication are on file.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Public hearing.
Public, oh, sorry. Now it's time for public hearing and ordinance number, um, this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, those who are on Zoom, raise hand, and there is no one on Zoom. Okay, see, there's no one. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five twenty-one oh nine?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one oh nine?
Well, second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Clear, please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one ten.
An ordinance authorizing lease of twenty, one twenty-seven dash one thirty-three Raritan Avenue to the Reforint Church in Highland Park Affordable Housing Corporation to maintain a storage and repair area for donations of household items. First floor and our affordable housing unit, second floor, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit to publication are on file.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone. There's anyone on Zoom, please do the raise hand, and there's no one on Zoom. And there, okay, see, there's no one. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one ten?
So move.
Roll call.
Give me a second.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one ten?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George?
I just want to point out to the public that this series of ordinances on second reading are the borough participating in allowing charitable organizations to have space that we have available to carry on operations where they might not otherwise be able to provide the services that they do. And I vote a resounding yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Clear, please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one eleven.
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to North Tenth Avenue and Volkerd Street project has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits are on file.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, those who are on Zoom, raise hand, and there's no one on Zoom, and there's no one, okay. See, no one. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five twenty-one eleven?
So move.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one eleven?
Motion, second.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
I'm going to give this one a yes, because it's Volkerd. Uh, yes, absolutely. If there's a yes box, though, Volkerd is in need, and this is a very exciting project.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Clear, please report on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one twelve.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Part One Administrative Legislation, Chapter seventy-two, Salaries and Compensation, to establish positions and provide compensation for specific employees of the borough of Highland Park, New Jersey, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits to publication are on file.
Now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, speak, please come up to the microphone. Those who are on Zoom, may do so by raising of your hands. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one twelve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one twelve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas? Consent agenda resolution. May, I ask any member of council if they would like to have any of the following consent agenda items pulled from the consent agenda for a separate vote. See, there's none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, A twelve through through twelve I? Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Now it's time for second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to conclude by nine P M. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those persons attended on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, see, see, no one. May I have a motion to close public participation?
There's one.
There is a minute.
Charlie, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, Charlie Cradaville. I live in New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community news outlet here. Spoke on the first about a disturbing video from the Highland Park Rent Control Board meeting, and never got any response from the elected officials. So I'm here tonight and wanted to ask you, Mayor, very directly, did you tell the borough attorney to adjourn the rent control board?
Anyone else on Zoom? And that can, uh, seeing that there's no one else on Zoom, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Roll call. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
The question, um, um, was brought up, but did the rent control meeting, did I said, did I advise the borough attorney to close the meeting? Yes, I did. Uh, the meeting was not proceeding in accordance with the local public meeting, and and so I suggested that the meeting be closed. Okay. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.